Welcome to Welcome to another episode of Get Real with Liz and today I have a special guest, somebody that's very important here in the community. Chris, could you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit? Who you are, what you do, and a little background of of yourself?
Thank you so much. Uh, my name is Chris Beal. I'm currently the newest member of the Paso Robles City Council, representing District One. And I'm, I am definitely new to the council, but I've been around Paso, you know, my whole life. Uh, I went to Winifred Pfeifer.
Oh wow.
Yeah, when it was actually uh, like the same location where Louis Georgia Brown is right now. That was actually my elementary school.
So you technically grew here.
I grew up here.
Wow.
And I raised my son here, you know, and so um, but yeah, I have a, a long history, a long background. Uh, but my newest chapter is that I am uh, the city council member representing District One.
Yay. So what made you take that spot, you know?
That's a very interesting question because it's not something that I would have thought that I wanted to do.
When you were a little girl, what you were like?
It was not, that is not the case. But you know, I started looking into it and I, I realized that I think there's value in um, people having a choice and having a diversity on the council, having different perspectives. And so I decided to throw my, my hat in the ring and give it a go.
Nice. Well, congratulations. You're fairly new.
Yes.
In the city council. Has this, you know, I'm sure you've had your challenges and and some triumphs. Uh, can you, you know, elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, it's really interesting because um, I did a lot of work in the community. Uh, in some ways I was an awful candidate because I never really talked about me. I always wanted to know what was important to people because that's really what needs to be represented.
That's not being an awful candidate. That's actually being a great candidate, you know?
Thank you. And um, and, and so I really got a sense of the types of issues that mattered to people. And somebody told me early on, they said, you know, if you just kind of stick to those values and have that be your North Star, then you let all of the rest go and you just kind of do your thing.
Right.
And so it's been, you know, challenging, obviously, because I haven't been in city government before. I had so, I still have so much to learn. Uh, but what lifts me up is to be able to be a voice for, you know, working families and the kids and making decisions on the kind of town that we're happy, you know, that we're passing off to the next generation. So it's been lovely.
Not only are you living here currently, but also like you said, passing it, passing that baton to your kids, your grandkids, or, or even just kids in the, in the community.
Yeah, one of the things I heard, you know, my son's thirty and it's, I raised him here and he went to all the same schools that I went to, which is very sweet. It's like a full circle thing. But you know, the situation is such that he couldn't afford to move back here.
Hmm.
Right? And that's, I would knock on people's doors, so kind of affordable housing and kind of the opportunities for the next generation to get into housing is challenging. And even from the older generation, they'd say, yeah, I'd like for my thirty year old to be able to afford something, you know, that we have these adults that are living with their families. Um, but the other thing that I heard about, wh- which was interesting to me is, you know, kind of this idea of, you know, things for our kids to do.
Hmm.
And, you know, play, and I called that like places and spaces for youth.
Right.
And I, I remember this one time I knocked on the door and I asked him, I said, you know, what kind of stuff matters to you?
Right.
And he just froze. And he said, no one's ever asked me that before.
And, and that's true. That's very true. You know, nobody takes the time to ask what are some of our concerns? Eh, you know, in the masses, you know, the minorities. You know, everybody thinks about like, hey, you know, tourists and let's get more businesses and stuff like that. But what about our kids, our, our s- sports? You know, we're running out of space on the parks, which is great that maybe we can talk about that. Um, but a lot of of diversity is, is good, but if we're limited to what we can do, it kind of just pushes us down or away, you know, kind of like the same thing that you said about your son.
It's interesting, you know, cause I'm uh, I, I uh, can, you know, I pay attention to, you know, local government. Um, I find it very interesting. I find it um, very personal.
Right.
Right? And um, what I've noticed is that we don't necessarily have people sort of plugging in from all walks of life to help inform and to help make decisions.
Yeah, educate.
So one of my things is just to like, take the mystery out of local government. It's, it doesn't need to be mysterious. Um, it is a little, it can be a little tricky sometimes, but I tell my friends, I'm like, I get all of the emails so that you don't have to.
Right, right. You put it in like, in words that they can understand because, you know, a word can be very intimidating to someone. They're like, oh, what does that mean? You know?
Well, that and even just like the website and, you know, I probably am getting a B plus on the website right now, but for somebody that's trying to like, find something very specific, it might be hard to manage. But that's, you know, I feel like people should be able to reach out to their council member, be able to reach out to city staff, ask questions. Because the more informed we all are, the better decisions we can make.
Right.
And um, I think that's healthy and.
It is healthy. It is healthy because, you know, sometimes like that's why there's a different diversity in the board, right? Because maybe your way of thinking might be different than my way of thinking. One passage or one word can mean something different to you and can be something different to me and not just the word itself, but our situation that we're going through in that particular moment as well. We can take it a certain way. We could take it offensive or like yay or nay or whatever, you know, so it's really good to have a variety of people on the board.
Ab- absolutely. And the other thing that I think was could, because I've learned a lot.
Right, right.
One of the things that I learned was the importance of like the advisory bodies.
Mm hmm.
So in just about every department, there are advisory bodies or commissions that do their work outside of the council, but then advise the council, right? So sometimes, you know, different decisions come before the council. But that's not the first time that that work has been done. It's there have been presentations, there have been studies, there have been
meetings.
Meetings. There have been things with the advisory bodies. Uh, the staff has been working on it. You know, if you, if you look at an issue like a train track, by the time it comes to the council, it's kind of like the last, the last stop.
The last stop, basically, yes, yes.
And so.
And that's very important that you're saying that because a lot of people don't understand that, you know, they think that, okay, there's a, something on the city council meeting on Tuesday, you know, which is next Tuesday or this Tuesday?
This next one's canceled. Oh, it's canceled. Okay, go ahead.
Normally the first and the third Tuesday.
Yeah, so it's usually the first and the third Tuesday for everybody, everybody that wants to attend these board meetings. But by the time these agendas go out and they see like, oh my gosh, something's going on. In reality, it's just the last process of it. So if you really want to get involved.
Yeah.
Reach out to her or anybody in the city council to see who you actually need to talk to prior.
Right. And you know, I just want to give you a perfect example of how this wonderful victory on parks happened.
Okay, yes, I want to know.
Right?
Right.
So.
We were just talking about that at the HBA because I have one of my friends and you know, he has kids trying to find a place to practice, but there's nowhere to practice.
Bingo. So um, here we have Chris, new council member who's very, yay, who's very invested in like places and spaces for kids, like what can the kids do?
Right.
And so we were all invited to the opening um, ceremony for Little League.
Mm hmm.
And it was like a trip down memory lane because my son played Little League and, and four of the council members went. It was great. And um, and it was fun. It was under the lights and all the teams were there. Everybody knows how fun that is.
Right.
And I ran into somebody that I've known for a long time, like through my old work.
Hmm.
And they said, oh my gosh, congratulations, Chris. We'd love to talk to you about playing field.
Right, right.
And I said, cool, let's get a cup of coffee. So they explained to me this issue of all, you know, teams competing for field space, that there just wasn't enough field space. Not enough lights, you know, in the winter time, they'd have to stop early.
Hmm.
That sometimes you'd have, it was so limited that they couldn't have hour and a half practices. They'd have to have hour practices.
Or, or their priority, or they were not priority. They give it to the adult league or stuff like that.
Yeah, exactly. So, and so I got kind of a, a
Emotional.
Emotional and I started understanding it a little bit more. So from that, I'm also part of my council responsibilities is I am a liaison or a voting member of ten committees.
Oh wow.
So when it, yeah. Oh, wow.
Right.
So, but one of my.
It's a lot of time consuming.
Oh my gosh. Yes. And um, but one of the, my committees is the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Oh wow.
So that's with, that's a division within the Community Services Department in the city. And so I suggested to the people that they come to the Advisory Body Committee.
Right.
And talk about the need for
Space.
Space, right? And you know, everybody on the advisory committee, if you're on a Parks Advisory Committee, you care about parks. You have an automatic.
At least that's what we want to believe, right?
No, they do. They're like really thoughtful and forward thinking and they get it.
Right.
So it was a, it was a chance for these parents to connect with the advisors and to also connect with the staff. Right? Just to make these connections.
Right.
And then they started telling their friends about it. So their friends would come to Advisory Body Committee, meeting. Then they'd have people come to the city council, right? Because you kind of want to be planting these seeds in different places.
Right.
So what happened was um, one of my colleagues said, this sounds really important. We should bring it up as an information item to the council.
Mm hmm.
And I said, yes. So.
And, and I'm glad that you said that too, because eh, you know, you said that the people at Parks and Recreation are very passionate about what they do, right? But sometimes they don't know the behind the scenes or the stra- the struggles of the individuals. So it's important for the families to come in and
Yeah.
join forces so that they know what's lacking and they have that support.
That's ex- that's exactly right. And um, so one of the, the way ag- agendas are set for the council meeting in different ways, but if one of the ways something can be brought to the agenda is if you have a consensus of council members that says, we think this is important, we'd like a
Talk about it.
We'd like to talk about it. It's just an information item. So staff came back and did a presentation, I think it was in May um, on Helica Fortin, who is our Director of Community Services.
Mm hmm.
And she gave just an outstanding presentation.
And she's awesome. She's, and she's gorgeous.
And she's brilliant.
Yeah.
And she um, did this presentation that was so persuasive and so compelling that the count, and in addition, all of our Little League soccer, football families all came and filled up the council and gave public comment on that item. And the council voted five zero to um, add lights and new turf to Sherwood.
Hmm, that's amazing.
Amazing. To invest in a master parks plan, amazing. So you aren't just doing one offs. You have like a plan.
Yes.
Right? And to have conversations with the school district about the disposition of the um, old Georgia Brown property on Thirty Sixth Street, which is in my district, right?
Oh wow.
We have no, very little open space.
Right.
In, on the west side of Paso Robles.
Mm hmm.
Five zero. And
That's amazing.
And then the next, that next, that was a Tuesday. On Friday night, we had closing ceremonies for Little League. That all happened.
Within the week.
Within the likes course of like a Little League season.
Yeah, that's amazing. And not only that, but also not only the space, but you know, fixing Sherwood Park. It's a safety hazard, you know? My kids play there and there was holes everywhere and it's like, oh, they're gonna twist their ankle or stuff like that. These are things that are very, very important.
And I think, you know, it's a great point. I can tell you that there's very little things that I bring forward to staff that um, they don't know about.
Right.
Like they know. But you have to remember, there's like, there are limited resources.
Right.
And I was at event the other day when we were opening up the refurbished uh, Royal Oak Meadows Park. And there were like seven uh, park staff there. And they're great. They work so hard. And somebody reminded me, this is our entire maintenance crew for parks in the city. Seven people. All these acres of, yeah.
Wait, what?
Wait, what?
Yeah, I thought maybe seven for that particular.
No, 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 no. For the whole city. Barney Schor, I mean, everything.
We need people. We need people. We.
Right? But that's, you know, the, I, I think it's important for pe- people to remember that we have a lot of different needs. And so we're always kind of balancing with the priorities.
Yeah, like you said, it's a balance. We need a balance. And right now it's just kind of offset, you know, if seven people managing all parks is just insane.
Yeah, all of the irrigation, all of the valves, right? It's
Right.
Kind of amazing.
Mm hmm.
But, you know, so, but th- things get left out.
Right.
Right? But I think it's, you know, the whole park story is a, a good example of like educating people, engaging people, and then they're empowered.
Right.
Right?
Allowing them to, to voice their opinion and their concerns. And not only that, but that the city council is actually doing something about it. Because when, you know, sometimes people get discouraged, right?
Yeah.
And, and it can go both ways. I mean, we've been to city councils plenty of times, like the taco trucks eh, situation and now the parks. If they wouldn't have voiced their opinion or gone there to to share their passion about their concerns, it could have went a totally different route.
Yeah, and I just, I like to celebrate the good things. At the same time, I also want to manage expectations because sometimes it doesn't work out.
Exactly.
Right? We don't get a win.
All the time.
Every time we're up to bat.
Right.
But if you don't show up, then your voice, you don't have a chance. You don't even get up to bat.
Yeah, exactly. You already, you, at least try striking out, right?
Yeah.
In Little League, you know, at least you stand up on the mat, and the mat and you try to hit the ball, but even if you didn't hit the ball, at least you tried.
Yeah.
You know?
I tell people, um, like, I'm not a magician.
Right, you're not.
I'm working on it.
Right? Well, who knows? You, you might have some superpowers, you know, behind your sleeves, you know? Who knows?
Cause I'm just, you know, the council is five people. We have a mayor and four council members. So it's a council of five. I'm just one person on that council. So the way things get agendized requires consensus.
Right.
You know, for something to pass or fail requires
Consent.
Yeah, it's a vote.
It's a vote. Majority vote.
Yeah.
And the thing is like, and that's a, that's another good point because a lot of the times people are like, oh, you didn't vote for me or you didn't help me. But in reality, I mean, even, you know, for example, um, in this last meeting or whatever, you voted no on something. I can't remember which one it was. Oh, I think it was uh, beautify the, that place across from Flamson.
Oh, on Spring Street, yeah.
And everybody else said yes, except, you know.
Yeah.
And so it wins by majority vote.
Yeah.
You still have your own personal vote, but unfortunately, you know, it goes by the majority.
Exactly. And um, I, I stand by my decisions. I'm, I do a lot of research. If you talk to anybody, you know that I'm like, by the time I get to council, I've already, sometimes our packets are like five hundred, a thousand pages for every meeting. And um, I get briefed or, you know, I clarify things with staff ahead of time. Um, I'm never, I'm, I'm, I never want to like, no gotcha questions.
Right.
Right? I want to educate myself. I want to inform the conversation. I want to, you know, educate the community with any question that I ask.
Right. Clarity.
Yeah, clarity. Clarity and transparency. Um, and so that's kind of my style.
Right. And you also want to, to know and do your own work, homework.
Yeah.
Because you want to be able to make sure you make the right decision when you do your personal voting, you know?
Exactly. So it's, it's interesting, you know, I've voted with everybody on the council. I voted against everyone, you know, and I think there's value in that, right?
Exactly.
I just did a training and one of the things they spoke about was the importance of not having group think.
Right.
That everybody just goes along with everything, that you have some different conversations. And I agree.
Right.
They were much more articulate about how they talked about it with me.
Well, they're also more experienced, right? But that doesn't change the value that you bring, you know? You, you're your individual person with your own thinking, your own beliefs, your own values, everything. So just the same as the mayor has his own values and concerns or whatever. And the same thing with the other council members, you know, each each individual, I, I, I call it like, kind of everybody has their own uh, tower or whatever. So um, you're sending now your signals, you know, depending on your values and your concerns.
Yeah, and what I try to explain to people and what I've tried to kind of share with my colleagues is we all have a different life experience, which is going to affect our worldview
Right.
and how we approach things. And there's value in all of it.
Oh yeah.
I, I've learned so much from my colleagues. You know, I hope I'm sharing information that's valuable for them.
I'm sure.
I'm, I'm, I think it's a, a, an improved process.
Right.
You know?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then another thing, you know, you said District One.
Oh yeah, let's talk about that.
So there's, can you tell us a little bit about what that means? Because, you know, I'm part of District Five. Um, and I had to learn a bunch of different things. I'm like, wh- what do you mean District Five?
And you're District Five in the county.
Yes.
So not a, right?
Yeah, I'm District Five in the county.
Which is different.
Which is different.
Than like a city district. It's very confusing.
Oh yeah.
And I'm pretty like savvy with it and I learn all the time.
Yeah, so I'm learning too. I'm, I'm with women's and girls representing District Five, which is Atascadero.
Yeah.
So we're kind of like a liaison or whatever committee, or I don't know what it is, like a commissioner, I think that's what it is, commissioner, um, representing Atasca, the the division or the District Five of Atascadero or whatever.
Yeah. So you know, exactly. So we have county government, which is like the whole county and we have city government.
Right.
Which is like within the city limits.
Right.
So in the city government, we have four districts. I'm in District One. And do, would you like to know where District One is? It's going to make you giggle.
Um, District One is Shandon?
Nope, because we're in the city limits.
Oh, oh, city, city, city. Uh, like twenty-four and that way.
So, okay, get ready. Here we go.
Okay.
District One is from Fifteenth Street all the way north up to
Thirty Second, Thirty Sixth, whatever.
Right? Uh, all the way up to the freeway.
Oh wow.
It's also the River Oaks area.
Hmm.
Out to the airport.
Yeah, to the airport.
And then it's a portion of Union Road. So think for a minute, how different all of those neighborhoods are.
They're all different. They're all different. It's downtown, like, well, pretty close to downtown. And then there's uh, Twenty Fourth that way. And then there's where Questa College is and all that stuff. And then Genesee over there.
Right? And so it's, it's like uh, and even what I learned was there are, the conversations on people's doorsteps from Vine Street to Oak Street, just a block away, were completely different.
Oh yeah. Their concerns are different.
Absolutely. And so it is, it, it was revealing to me.
It's revealing to me. I had no idea. When I was helping Maria Garcia uh, be part of the city council, we were knocking on every single door.
So much work.
Every door, like knocking on the door, asking like, hey, you know, this is Maria Garcia, uh, she's here, going to be part of the city council, you know, asking what their concerns, what do they need? Uh, what are we doing right? What are we not doing right? You know? And it was a lot of time consuming, but it was actually a really nice and neat experience because we got to meet uh, different types of people, diversity, the elderly, the youngsters, the Hispanics, the everything, you name it.
I think you bring up such an important point because like me as Chris,
Mm hmm.
you know, I have my circle.
Right.
My circle of friends, people I work with. I have kind of my, my circle of people.
Right.
And if I'm not going, I don't like go into other circles without effort. That just doesn't happen on its own, right?
Right.
But by really talking to people in the different neighborhoods, it forced me to get out of my own silo.
Right.
Personally.
Comfort zone.
Yeah. And to understand all of the different perspectives. But that also takes effort.
Right.
That does not happen on its own. And I think there is value for the city as we're kind of making some big decisions and trying to figure out what our vision is.
Mm hmm. And then the other thing is sometimes you don't know, right? If you're going to be welcoming or or what, like, who are you? Why are you knocking on my door? What do you want from me? And we're like, no, we just want to, to help you.
Yeah, and there's, there's something to be said about like developing trust with people.
Right.
You know, I went um, so I, I, so we had big issues like the parks that we got a really good vote on and it, just, just so you know, it takes time to get it moving, but like, we're on the right track. Um.
Yeah, that's another thing. It doesn't happen.
No.
It's not going to be tomorrow when the parks are going to be completely fixed and nice and pretty.
Budgeting cycle. They go through contracting for everything. I mean, it's a pretty.
Planning, everything.
So the other thing is I just like to keep talking to people, how's it going? And help people where I can. So I was up on like North Spring Street and I just, you know, I want to make sure people have my cards and I walked in and I did like all the businesses.
Mm hmm.
And I walked in and everybody was like, hi, Chris. And it just filled my heart that, one, they remembered me, right? And then they all, I said, hey, how's it going? You know? But they all were telling me challenges that they were having with parking in their neighborhood.
They felt comfortable.
Yeah. And I thought, this is so great because this is how the work kind of continues. And I can then take that back to the city manager. We kind of route that with staff
Mm hmm.
and see what we can do to fix it, you know? Um, but like, I didn't know that that was an issue for them.
Right.
But until you ask.
Exactly. Ask and you should receive, I always say, you know?
Yeah.
And if you put yourself in a situation where you're able to feel welcoming, you know, because I noticed that, you know, you have support. You know, we went to the city council from, you know, for the taco trucks. And I did see the, the support from, from the community towards you, you know? So you are making a difference in the city, whether you believe it or not. Or if you haven't heard it lately, now you know. But you are very welcoming into the community in the city of Paso Robles. So for you to just kind of step in and take your time out of your busy schedule to stop by on these local businesses. They felt compelled to you and they felt that you will appreciate their concerns and then take them back to the city council.
Yeah, I just, I, it just fills my heart. Thank you.
Of course, I mean, it's the truth.
I was so, when the whole food truck thing came up, I was really pleased that people trusted me enough to call me and to tell me about what their experience had been.
Right.
And that I had to become a food truck expert all of a sudden. I become an expert in lots of things every other week.
Yeah. You have to, to be on top of mine.
It's sort of like I went to staff. I was, you know, working with stuff with the county. I did a lot of homework on it. And I helped plug in HBA and kind of talk to them about what was going on in my mind, helped share information. And the people, I had a couple of different food trucks contact me and so I helped share information of how the meeting would go.
Right.
You know, and if they wanted to give public comment, this is what, here's, here's the agenda. Here's what staff is recommend, re- recommending.
Mm hmm.
Here's how you want to participate. If you want to send emails, here's how you do that. So I like provided information. And when I walked in and I saw the full room. You're like, I did it. I.
Well, but it's, see, it wasn't just me, like I. But it was you too, because you know, without that information that you send out forward, none of this would have been possible. Because people don't know where to reach out to. They don't know that, you know, if they go on the website, they don't really understand. I tried to look up the agenda prior and I'm like, what, what's going on? And I kept clicking and PDF files and all that stuff, but, because I want to know what time they were going to talk about it. Cause I'm familiar with boards, so I'm like, okay, if I'm running late, am I going to be able to make it? You know, whatever. So that's the reason why I was trying to go into the website. But a lot of these people, you know, they work till five or six o'clock at night. And then
Or later.
Or later.
Their food trucks.
Exactly. And then on top of it, you know, they have to go feed their families or, you know, take their kids to sports or their school uh, homework. So they don't have the time and energy to, to go look at information like that, especially when sometimes the language barrier.
Absolutely.
You know, they, they don't know where to, I'm telling you about the words being intimidating. Now imagine a, a, a different language, you know, so it was really rewarding to see the room full because, you know, not only did you provide that information to them that we, we were going to talk about that, but also the HBA reached out to a lot. but also the HBA reached out to a lot of um these food trucks I mean people uh El Guero you know he doesn't live here and he comes and does his food truck on the weekends and he drove from up north
I didn't know that
to be here and so and and a lot of those food trucks they come from out of the area not necessarily in town from Paso but they come from like Parkville or whatever and they were in that room
oh my gosh so it's so I just was beaming when I walk it just it filled my heart and I was like ah this is why I do this because I want it to be accessible that was what I said that night was had this outreach happened six months ago we wouldn't have this issue right the process would have been clearer and more consistent
because honestly is just the loss of translation in in reality in this in that particular issue you know it's not the there's no consistency and there's no um how do you say it uh clarity so if there would have been clarity and consistency since the beginning then it shouldn't be an issue because these people are hard workers and they wanna do right and um and they wanna do the right thing but then next thing you know they're like oh you didn't do that and they're like what what do you mean it it says right here oh no look at the website and the website says something the pamphlet says something else and then something else is being said so it's just that lack of not knowing what's right when they wanna do
absolutely I think and I think it's all gonna get worked out
I think so too but I'm glad that we all showed up because it could have went a different way you know I think that if that room wouldn't have been full people would have gotten sighted you know uh penalized you know they had um the 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 police department that's another thing the police department when they're being called they don't they go and look at certain regulations and it doesn't match the other regulations so they're just doing their job so we can't get upset at the police department because they're doing their job but also the tr- truck trucks the truck drivers or whatever they're doing their job and they think that they're doing the right thing so everybody was just kinda like it was all chaotic so I think that if if they wouldn't have showed up and showed their support and their concern that they actually do wanna do the right thing it could have gone a different way and they could have had a misconception of the food truck owners because everybody thinks like oh they don't care they don't they don't wanna pay fees or they're just invading our space or whatever the situation is but in reality they're not they're trying to do the right thing
I think it's such a good import I think that whole situation had several for one I had someone call me up afterwards and they said that was so good I I didn't share cuz I'd never been to a meeting I didn't know how it worked but now I know
right and that was another thing a lot of these people didn't even speak the language but they still voice their concerns which I was so proud of them oh my gosh I was just like the cheerleader in the back you know um they voice their concerns uh even though the language barrier was a concern even though they were being attacked or you know like they don't wanna get fines nobody wants to pay fines you know um and like I said if they wouldn't have shown up I think it would have gone a totally different way it's kinda like you're going on the highway and it's either that way that way or straight you know and it could have easily went the other way where they could have had more regulations or cited and they couldn't have their trucks there and but now that everybody now it created a a committee
yeah an ad hoc committee that uh creates a process where people can get involved and it goes to this ad hoc committee and then the ad hoc committee will come back to council to make a recommendation that and that recommendation will be better informed you know and
and they'll focus on everything you know like the like for example they were talking about the generators you know the the tables or the shade um it will it will target every single little aspect of it
yeah and so like we had people that came to a meeting and know more and it's not scary well it is still scary I mean it's scary for me sitting up there for goodness sakes but and we got an ad hoc which is good um but the other thing when I was walking back after helping set out more chairs that night which is great the city manager Mr. Huat he said boy if I'd known that that we would have had translation next time this comes up for a council item we will have translation translation for the ad hoc committee so that's a great outcome and I think we should all be really proud of that and that came about just demonstrating a need engaging people and you have to pay attention you know so it's great
no I thought that was I thought that was a great outcome I was very proud of the community getting involved cuz i- it is intimidating you know they've never been to a meeting like that they don't know what to expect I mean some people were there since the beginning it was a long, long, long night so everybody's just like well what time are we they're gonna talk about it but they don't know they don't know the process so um they sucked through it though so that was amazing so that's amazing that's a win yeah and the parks is a total win that's even more amazing for me cuz I I'm all very passionate about kids and stuff you mentioned uh your son uh going back to your son um you mentioned your son not living here uh because of affordability you know we just had a meeting in San Luis Obispo with the county and they were talking about that then nowadays um kids are not wanting to have kids for the same reason you know we're the opposite
there's another one coming up in September
I always go to cuz I'm part of the Board of Realtors and um I'm in the I'm a board member there so and I was part of the Women's Council so I'm very involved too in the community and and it's important to educate ourselves so that we're able to educate others you know because sometimes you know people don't have an understanding but you can kinda tell them and help them you know and adv- and advocate to them or whatever
yeah so it's funny that you mentioned that so one of my issues is housing warning that's not something that's gonna get fixed very quickly it's hard, hard, hard the city is doing a lot we need to do more obviously but I I see my role as kind of a liaison to share information from the city to the community like what's happening and also from the community to the city so after that summit I actually at the here's a tip
tell me tell me
sometimes the best part of the meetings are like the last fifteen minutes because that's when we get to give our individual comments that don't have anything to do with the agenda and those are my chances an issue to educate my neighbors to possibly get something on the agenda I've been able to get things on the agenda but after that housing summit I I spoke about that I spoke about how young people were making decisions not to have children
right that's pretty sad honestly grandkids not right now but eventually
you could hear a pin drop when I said that because it's such a poignant
yeah it is
reality
it it's it's a reality in general you know uh overall I think because obviously our population's gonna decrease which can cause a lot of other factors you know businesses and everything
diverse community that brings us joy gosh and so yeah it's a tricky thing so I'm a liaison to the Housing Authority board which I love and actually affordable housing is very complicated I'm still learning a ton
it is very complex and there's different programs for that department
and I'm always calling people I'm like okay explain this to me you know I called Lonnie who's the executive director for the Paso Robles Housing Authority which is outside of the city but it's a quasi-government organization and I said do you have like an infographic where's my you know so she'll like explain something to me I'm like okay that's great but now I have five more questions
no it's true I think that's one of our biggest concerns uh moving forward uh uh that's crazy that you were there I didn't see you maybe maybe I did see you at a glass I can't remember cuz that was last year but I'm looking forward to this years and there's always concerns you know building out building up that was one of the things that they were talking about you know it's like what do you do and now that you know this is a very tourist place you know it's like what do you do
it's a really good question and I I don't claim to be I know right if maybe I were working on one little thing I could be an expert but I'm in all of these different departments but I think if we I come from a background in like sustainability so you're always talking about balance balance, balance, balance and I think looking at housing from a balanced standpoint I think looking at the workforce from the balanced standpoint jobs industry types of businesses that's always gonna make community more resilient right cuz you can have ups and downs and things happening yeah but the more the more dominant you have a certain housing type a certain job type the more susceptible it will be to you know things going on in the world that might affect them so I'm always gonna have that framework when I look at things the city like there are two new affordable housing complexes that came online this year so Sunrise Vias which is down the street nearly seventy-five units affordable housing for families and the waiting list is long and it's life-changing for people and I also want people to understand these are working families you can qualify for you are working right so it's a little bit of breathing room for people we also have a new affordable housing for seniors that's over by the old JCPenney's
yeah is it done already
it's done I'm gonna call you and at the mayor always comes to all of these it's always he and I for some reason just based on schedule and so it's
third musketeer
it's it'll be great yeah and you know he was talking about he always gives a you know he makes uh like remarks at these events and he was talking about how like the waiting list for the senior complex is five hundred and he said he said so we need more of these
that's crazy
and the and the interesting thing to remember is that like I'm the liaison to the Housing Authority so I'm the one that shared that information at the council meeting in my final comments to help educate my colleagues
cuz they don't know
they don't know they're they're not at the Housing Authority meetings they're at other meetings that I don't know about I know from them
and the same thing you know you going to the summit and letting them know that hey this is a concern you know it's important
so it's you know there's a you know I educate the community I educate the colleagues I you know I work with the do a lot with the staff I have little like constituent services that I try to work out some of them are easy some of them are hard some of them are impossible
hey nothing's nothing's impossible everything's possible one way or another
oh this is possible but it's probably ten years down the road
it's all about kinda like the I mean this is out of your your jurisdiction or whatever but you know I'm a realtor and there's like a water memorandum in Cambria and stuff like that and so people are always asking me when is it when is it gonna be lifted I don't know it could be ten years fifteen years it could be tomorrow it can be in a year we sometimes you know it's not that it's impossible it's just time
and it's so important that you like educate people right and manage expectations around that
oh yeah you have to set expectations because you know setting those expectations people don't feel like in shock or like thrown off or or anything like that at least you're setting it and you know they can understand it a little bit better
it's so interesting cuz there's issues I live in the busiest part of town or you know I represent the busiest part of town you know like fifteenth street north right so lots of cars lots of pedestrians lots of traffic right schools I have four schools I have four public schools in my district right so um I'm always hearing why don't we have a crosswalk like at this street so we have one person that like made that request and I what one of the things I want people to know is the city in general does not just go out and go oh well we'll go put this here we'll put this there right
it's a process
and you don't want them to do that you don't want one person to be determining the priorities of the city as a whole because if they're gonna do this that means that they can't do that it's always like time and money you want these decisions made based on data and information
focus on the facts
focus on the facts so a lot of these is like uh stop signs lights traffic pedestrians all that stuff has to be studied you know and there is going to be some like master kind of traffic plans coming up so I think it's important for people to understand that
yeah no it's I think it's important for people to understand that and also if there is a concern cuz this happened to me I drive a lot and I was I was turning on Riverside Road and they were and then next thing you know I get a flat tire and I was like what in the world what happened like I was like I just literally turned well there was a a bar wire whatever or a thing sticking out and at first I was just like oh my gosh you know like but then somebody's like no no go to the city let them know because if I don't let the city know and apparently there was a lot of other incidents but nobody really said anything
so one of those little metal things that they've been reporting in the news no something different anyway
no this is like a from the actual um what's it called sidewalk the the metal thing was sticking out and it cut my tire
oh my gosh
and um and it was sticking out like it wasn't like okay I hit the curb no it was like the thing was sticking out and I didn't realize it until after I turn and then uh you know by the Board of Realtors that's why I was like my car just I was like what and I stopped and I was like I wonder what happened and then my friend the mechanic or whatever came and he's like oh it's probably over there and we sure enough we walked and the thing was sticking out so I had to take a picture he's like go to the city and I I went and they addressed it right away they put cones and stuff like that but you know if out of sight out of mind right so you have to let them know in order to see a difference because if you
a hundred and sixty-one miles of roads like we can't see it
you are ma- you know you're part of district one or whatever but you don't you don't know what's going on thirty-sixth street if you're on fifteenth street you don't know what's going on on fifteenth street if you're in Geneseal you know if you're over there by Questa College I mean that's why it's important for people to voice I mean I'm not saying complain or whatever but
we need everybody like we can be good
yeah just address concerns in our city you know
I had I saw a thing where somebody they said oh there's all this city running there's all there's there's all this water running down the street and and I I said well are there like city trucks and they're like yeah I said believe me we don't want a lot of water running down the street you know I said does it look like they're working on the fire
well you're over here charging me or or reprimanding me for wasting my water and you guys are wasting the water
but it was interesting when the situation was
right no that's what I'm saying that's probably what they were thinking and they're like
like fire hydrants which is can you imagine how long it would take to go flush all of the fire hydrants in the city but you have to do that to make sure that they're working there's a whole process there's you know we sort of talked about a couple things that were challenging but from what I've seen the city stopped their professional their experts their conscientious they care and while we might see the you know five ten percent of the stuff that we don't like the water running down the street the sidewalk thing that you know ripped open your tire or whatever there's there's ninety percent of the stuff that's working great you know um like the Public Works Department has fifteen thousand city trees I just can't even get my head around how you would take care of that or maintain that right uh think about all of the sewer all of the water all of
I totally understand that's why I said you know if anybody has I totally understand. That's why I said, you know, if anybody has uh um an issue that they see, you know, let them know so they can take care of it, because not all the time you're constantly, you know, everywhere.
And it's how we learn and some, again, some stuff is easy, sometimes stuff is hard. There's an app.
Right.
For that.
Oh, there is? Oh, I didn't know that.
It's called See Click Fix. And if you, you know, go see, see, click, fix, and then um go into Paso and you can report an issue.
Oh, wow.
And the best thing is to be very, very, very specific, like where. So sometimes we get reports of lights that don't work. Well, these get repaired during the day, so it'd be helpful, like, be very specific which lights they are.
Right. The one on twenty-fourth street on Riverside Road.
I mean, it is really helpful, the more specific, so, but those get, you know, we have like a bunch of different departments. They all get routed to the right department. Some of them, they don't just go out and fix everything, they try to batch the work orders, um but people pay attention to that and things get resolved. So that's a good way to report.
Oh, yeah.
You can email me.
Say it again, say it again, cuz I think I interrupted you.
It's K B L, B E A L at P R City dot com.
Yeah, so any, any concerns or any um opinions or any, you know, good, positive affirmations or whatever you wanna send her, send her.
Yeah, absolutely, and I
Cuz it, it doesn't always have to be negative. It can always be positive, you know.
What I tell my friends, I said, there's, again, there's so much good stuff happening in the city.
Right.
And like, I hope we all love the city.
Right.
And we want it to be better for the next generation, so let's work together to do that.
Right.
You know, and, but yeah, like having, you know, nice emails um is refreshing. Because out of a hundred emails
You wanna at least see one that says, you're doing a great job. I'll make sure I send you one.
Right? We ap- we appreciate that.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, well, sometimes, you know, you work, you work, you work and you, sometimes it feels really rewarding, you know, to to feel appreciated, you know? Even if it's just like, hey, I saw you and you said hi to me, and you're like, oh, they noticed me or whatever. You know, something like that, i- it's even, anything is rewarding.
Yeah, and I would just, it is. And I got a picture and an email the other night of a parking issue kind of by the um old high school on football night, so there was a problem cuz people were parking there for football. But one side, you weren't supposed to be parking there, but it was kind of faded paint. And um but you couldn't, you you know, the neighbors couldn't get through, uh emergency service couldn't get through, so it was a real kind of safety.
Yeah, some flamsen?
Uh, so, yeah, it was like Fairview that goes to Flamsen.
Yes.
Um, great parking spot, uh so
F Y I.
Yeah. Um, but it was supposed to be red and, you know, there was trees covering the, no parking and the red wasn't very bright.
Right.
But even that, that required like the city manager, Public Works, Public Safety to like assess it.
Right.
But they went and fixed it and I got a, that's the long way of my story, saying that I got an email with a picture. Nobody parked on there. I even went at nine thirty, I was like, there's no one parking here. This is so great. It worked.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, it's the little things, you know, the little things that make a big difference, you know.
It is the little things.
And I'm sure the neighbors are very appreciative now that they're able to get in and out of, you know
Yeah. And it's, and safety too, like for the fire trucks and stuff, cuz sometimes, you know, our fire vehicles have to get through there for a medical emergency and so the city is doing a lot of great fit stuff and the staff has been great. My colleagues have been great. They've been taught me a lot and invited me and welcomed me in and
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Chris, can you tell us, you know, uh the meetings again?
Yes.
Uh, for the city council?
Yeah, absolutely. So the city council meetings are twice a month, so they're the first and third Tuesday. They, the public part of the meeting starts at six P M. They're in the city council chambers. But we're gonna move for a few months, we're gonna be at Centennial because we're remodeling um City Hall.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's been like thirty years in the making.
That's what I was gonna say. I'm like, oh, really? Now, finally.
I know. It was funny because it's not something I think of, it's not my thing, but I was walking down the the hall the other day, I was, and you know, the carpet
Right, yeah, it's lifting, yeah.
I was like, uh, okay.
You were surfing on the carpet.
It's like, I'd be happy I didn't trip on it. Be bad.
True, that's a safety.
That's a safety issue, right? So they're the first and third Tuesday, um, yes, at six P M. The agendas are actually posted a week ahead of time, which is really nice. You can go on the website, if you wanna get emailed when a meeting comes up, you can go to the homepage, P R City dot com, and if you scroll down, there's a button that says um notify me, you can sign up for like email.
Oh, okay.
And there's also a button that says like agendas and minutes. If you click on that, that'll take you to anything that's kind of coming up. The Airport Commission or the Planning Commission or
Which that's, that's what we're talking about. If you really wanna get involved in the community
Yeah.
before it becomes like a settlement.
Yeah.
Reach out to those.
I I think so too, and if anybody has any questions, like, just reach out to me cuz somebody's, you know, we have, there's gonna be a new housing committee that comes up.
Right.
It's a Housing Constraints and Opportunity Committee. It had been kind of ad hoc, but they're gonna formalize it. And I'm particularly interested in that.
Okay.
And um I think, you know, that's a, that's gonna be a good one to be monitoring. If you care about parks, that's a good one to mon- if you care about libraries, all of the free services that our libraries provide. Amazing.
Right.
You know, amazing. So there's lots of different ways to plug in. If if you want any tips, let me know. But you can, eh, on that notify me button on the homepage, you can basically sign up for any email. Um, so council meetings, but also housing, food trucks, cannabis, you know, it's gonna be a thing again, so, you know, like, who knows?
I was gonna say something, but well, maybe in another podcast.
Who knew?
Right.
I had, I just, you know, I
Right.
I learn all the time.
Right, there's always something. So, yeah, if you wanna get involved, uh, reach out to her or go on the website.
Yeah.
Uh, can you tell them your email again so that they can email you directly?
Yeah, so my email is K B L, B E A L, uh at P R City dot com.
Perfect.
You can Google me too.
Yeah, Google her. See her at our H B A meetings as well. Um, and Chris, would you like to um close it out with some kind of motivational quote or anything that you wanna tell your followers and the people that are supporting you?
I just, I I appreciate everyone's um willingness to trust me and to ask me questions and to share with me what's happening um in their lives. And uh I love that people wanna learn and that people find the courage and are brave to show up and participate in this. Because together, that's how we make change. So I'm only one person. You know, I can give people, I can empower people because I can give you a voice up in the dais.
Right.
But also you give me power because you show that these things matter to you.
Right.
Right? So together, we actually can influence some change and and move things in the direction that we want to.
Right, right. So basically, in other words, uh togetherness means power.
Power.
Yeah, so thank you again for coming. I appreciate you taking the time out of your busy schedule to be here. And if you guys have any questions or concerns with the city, uh feel free to reach out to her. She already gave you guys your information. And thank you, guys.
Thank you.